Good evening. It is six thirty-two. Apologize for a little bit of a late start. On eleven February twenty twenty-five, this is the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School, School District Board of Directors. I do call this meeting to order. Like to announce publicly that the board met in executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss matters of personnel and contracts, and we will be meeting again in executive session immediately upon conclusion of the regular meeting this evening to continue those discussions of personnel and contract issues. With that said, Director Murray. Thank you. Mrs. Hartman, may I please have a roll call?
Director Blow. Director England.
Present.
Director Fowler.
Present.
Director Klein.
Present.
Director Kreiser.
Present.
Director Moyer.
Here.
Director Murray.
Here.
Vice President Williams.
Here.
President Nam.
Present.
Eight present, one absent.
Okay, thank you. We do have a new agenda item that was placed on the agenda this, this evening. Dr. Messinger, do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, there was actually a motion placed yesterday on the agenda. The, the document, the agreement itself was placed today, and it's in reference to bond counsel and for the life of me. I don't, eight point three, it's item eight point three. So just want to make note of that as it was, the item was placed, the motion was placed on twenty-four hours in advance. However, the actual document was placed on today.
Great, thank you. Okay, with the addition of item eight point three per regulation and rules, is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Director Murray, is there a second? Thank you, Director England. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving this evening's agenda, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so that motion carries unanimously of those present. We'll move to the presentations. High School Students of the Month for February are Liliana Sherrick and Hunter Shiraki. I hope I said those names correctly. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club. Lilianne or Hunter, are you here, either one? I know I see some students here, okay. Middle School Student of the Month for February is Wesley Groff. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and Wesley will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. So congratulations to all those students. Excellent job, well done. Student Board Representative.
Director Nam, I believe Wesley is here.
Oh, Wesley, are you here? Oh, hey, great. Congratulations. Well done, well done. Great. Glad you came. It's one of the rare occurrences.
When you get bored, you, you don't have to stay, okay? Although, you, you didn't know, you were supposed to bring cupcakes for everybody.
Okay, great. Is Student Council Representative, oh, Carter, great.
That's a fresh dew that you got there, buddy.
Didn't recognize you.
Good afternoon. All we have going on is March twenty-ninth is our Spring Fling Dance, and the theme is cherry blossom.
Okay.
It's all we got, it's all we got going on.
Very good report, thank you. Okay. All right. Next presentation, Kirk on AI. Just looking forward to this.
Kirk, that student left. Is that an indication that your presentation's not gonna be exciting? While he's getting that, continued just presentations from several of our staff. You heard last week, you heard elementary, tech, I think AI is something that we've been discussing in policy, but it, it is hitting education full force right now. And to make sure that the board understands, you know, what that means for us and, and what our next steps are, I asked Kirk to present on that. Next, in March at the committee meeting, you'll have two presentations, one from the secondary and one from myself, to wrap up kind of our mid-year update and, and take a look at what's coming for next year. So without further ado, you ready?
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to speak on a developing topic in educational technology. Gary asked me to speak about generative AI and, and what it means for K-12 education. I have seventy-five slides, so here we go. I'm joking. Okay, here we go. First of all, I mean, AI is, you know, has been a staple of science fiction for nearly a century, but over the last fifty to seventy-five years, machine learning and technology have come a long way. And in, if you're familiar with Moore's Law, there's, you know, there's pretty some amazing advancements have, have taken place with computing technology. And those breakthroughs, more importantly for us, those breakthroughs have led to technology that's now publicly available, which means it's available for our teachers, it's available for our students. And so let's talk about what that means for us. So first of all, when we're talking about AI in this context, we're talking about what is called generative AI. That means it's an artificial intelligence that's capable of generating original content. It doesn't just locate the best answer, it actually produces what it believes is the best answer from all of the available answers that it has in its repertoire. This can take the form of text, images, audio, and video, and it does this in response to a requestor's prompt. Now, what's amazing as well is that, you know, you're probably used to the days of searching on a search engine for key words, and you might say helicopter plus high speed plus something else in order to get the correct answer. The difference here is that generative AI uses what's called natural language processing. It's able to read what you have written in human-readable format. And these things have been trained with what are called, with massive amounts of data and are often referred to as large language models. They are handed text that makes the Library of Congress look puny. So this can take several different forms in the, in the natural world here. The most common being the text or chatbot. Many of you have probably tried out ChatGPT or Google Gemini and seen some of these kinds of responses. So we are, we're taking a text prompt, feeding it into the chatbot, and receiving a response that can take the form of a conversation, a paragraph, an article, and any, any format you can imagine. There are other prompts, other solutions such as Midjourney that are capable of being handed a prompt and developing video or images based on that prompt. And it does this by reaching into its mind and looking at every picture it knows that meets the prompt's criteria. We can also synthesize speech, music, and sound with these kinds of prompts. So I want to give a couple of examples of how just these prompts are appearing in daily life that you may or may not recognize. On the left is the response of a typical Google search from maybe a year, a year and a half ago, when you would ask a question like, how fast can a blue jay fly? You would be given a, an excerpt from a particular website that was the best fit, and then a link to that website. On the right, I asked a similar question, and the Gemini generative AI produced a, a layout with a series of bulleted points, including most prominently the answer to the question. So what's happening here is a very different approach to creating content and answering questions for the prompt requester. This is another example where you might not be able to see it on the screen real well. Your slide deck in front of you can show this. I asked the same question in slightly different manner. How fast is the wind in a tornado? And on the other side, what is the airspeed inside of a tornado? The responses are similar, but not the same. The bulleted lists are different. The relevant answer is largely the same. But this is an example of this sort of probability of getting toward the, the correct answer, that the, the AI is essentially taking the best gamble at the probable answer. And that's one of the reasons why the answers will never be quite the same each time, but they often get us to an accurate answer nonetheless. This one's for fun. I just wanted to have a little bit of fun to show you an example of a, an image generation prompt. I use the Firefly AI prompt from Adobe to generate art and photographs of something that can possibly exist in the real world, a camel riding a bicycle. So I think what's important to note is that the color schemes, the desert scene in the background also relays the training and the bias or presuppositions that fed the data in this solution. The architecture in the buildings looks somewhat Middle Eastern. The fact that it's a desert scene, it pulled from its understanding and its knowledge of the context of images of camels to produce a scene that, you know, fits that, fits that narrative of its training. Okay, so what in the world does all of this mean for education? Well, there's a lot of different examples that are being used on a daily basis by teachers and students across the country already. With the right kind of professional development, teachers can kind of accomplish a, a number of direct examples of AI in the classroom. Number one, like my image generation, this could be an opportunity for a student to find a creative spark, for a teacher to generate a creative prompt that would feed into a creative light, creative writing opportunity. It can also provide what is typically referred to as scaffolding, where a student receives a certain amount of temporary support while learning a new skill. So the, the AI may be able to answer some basic questions for a student while they learn to get to the intermediate and more advanced parts of that same lesson. The creativity of the, of the, the solution can also produce basic outlines in writing exercises. A number of students can struggle to just get started when it comes to a writing exercise, and having an AI prompt blurt out some valuable bullet points can be critical for a student to kind of figure out where to get started. So this can empower students in a lot of different ways. Another important development that's likely to come from this is the skills that students will use in a future world may have more to do with learning to be editors than being writers. The ability to take the content that an AI produces and improve it and make it your own voice is going to become an increasing, increasingly important skill for students in a world where there is just so much content being generated. Being able to identify and revise that content and improve it is an important kind of differentiation skill. Okay, so all of this stuff, I mean, let's be honest, all of this stuff is not a perfect recipe for education, and there are certainly concerns. I, I'm an advocate for student data privacy, and that is probably one of my biggest concerns right now is that it is unknown with each of these systems. While a lot of them will promise in their Terms of Service to not use anything private that is given to them, it is not unheard of for private information to be handed to an AI prompt and then have it later be blurted out to a different user. So that is a concern, and that's probably one of my biggest concerns around its use. And I think that's where training around responsible use and digital citizenship will be important. AI is also capable of bias. It's only as smart, or as fair, or as kind as the information that was used to train it, much like a child and what they are exposed to, that can play a big part in this. So we want to make sure that the solutions and the systems that we do support are those that are responsible and education-focused, and are careful not to promote those that, that have serious stereotype problems. And obviously, this is a massively new set of technological infrastructure that is being put in front of students and, and teachers. And, and we have to find a way to bring teachers up to speed how to use this stuff. Professional development is going to be key to allowing a teacher to integrate as much of this as they feel comfortable with, and improving over time to, to make this work, work its magic. Some other obvious public concerns are academic integrity, right? So we have a lot of concerns about the potential that students will use an AI prompt to quickly and effortlessly generate their product and avoid real research and, and problem-solving skills. And of course, these, some of these chatbots also have Terms of Service that do not protect young users from inappropriate interactions or inappropriate content. I think that it's important to note, when it comes first off to the, to the academic integrity question, the, the professional development will be key to this, right? So with the right skills, teachers will be able to, to determine whether or not students caught what they taught. And over time, teachers will be better prepared to focus on the process rather than the product. The type of assessments that teachers use will have to adjust to a world where simply producing a three-page paper in and of itself is not enough to determine whether a student has grasped a subject or a topic. Okay, so where do we go from here? You know, there's lots of different approaches, and these are just some, some of my thoughts. They, they run the gamut here to some degree, but I've said it before, I'll say it again, professional development will be key, making sure that we have that built into our training schedule for teachers in the coming years. We need to also provide instructional content for students at the, at the elementary level, probably working it into their digital citizenship curriculum where they understand the responsibility and the ethics, when to use something, how much of it to use, and when it's dishonest or inappropriate to do so. The district could certainly consider adopting an official platform. There are a number of official platforms out there that have a K-12 focus, and with that K-12 focus comes a number of safeguards and ways to prevent people from going off the rails. So we're gonna focus further on providing training to the faculty on the specific techniques that would be used with any of these officially adopted platforms. And we probably need to focus on limiting the use of the unofficial platforms so as to eliminate some of those temptations. And this is such a, a developing, a rapidly developing world, we're gonna have to continue to watch for policy advancements in case law. There have been a number of, of interesting state-level cases regarding academic integrity and whether or not policies had been clearly defined by a school district. And so it's gonna be important for us to watch closely and adjust any policies that we develop at a pretty rapid pace as needed. I have a few more slides that I didn't really necessarily plan to include, but I, I'm not taking too long, I'll just go through them quickly here. We, I asked our teachers to fill out a very simple survey, and this first slide is just a basic question of whether or not any of them are using some form of generative AI in the classroom. And about three out of ten of our teachers are using it in some capacity. Of those who are, it looks like ChatGPT and an education-focused platform called Magic School AI are the clear-front runners. Magic School AI has some free functionality and then has a more premium solution for, for cost. And finally, this might be a little hard to read, but I can try to interpret this that best. We asked teachers who are using AI, in what manner are they using AI? And you can see that the most common answers are to produce lessons, quiz and practice tests, or to draft or revise their own communication. They might be asking it to, to produce a paragraph that summarizes an important detail that they wanted to provide perhaps to a parent or, or, or other community member. I spoke really fast and went on for a long time there, so I'm gonna pause for a moment. Does anyone have any questions?
So first of all, Kirk, thank you. Excellent presentation. It's a brave new world. You said something I thought was really interesting. You said the future of education may be evaluating the process over the product. Was that your, I, was that your observation, or is that something we're seeing in like higher education, or?
I'd love to take credit for that, but no. I, I've been listening to some education-related podcasts and so forth, and that was a, a phrase pulled from a, a series of educators. But I, it, I think it does a decent job of kind of summarizing the difference that, that is gonna happen here, where information is so accessible that learning to evaluate the quality of it is, is a critical skill that may be even more important than finding information, is being able to tell good information from terrible information.
Any other questions?
Well done. Very well done. I really appreciate the presentation on this information. It's certainly something that we need to be, I don't know if we'll ever be on top of it, but need to be continuing to learn more about. I appreciate that. And I just want to know if ChatGPT can tell me what the tax rate should be for Northern Lebanon. So maybe we can put that in and let it generate, so, yeah.
Be an interesting answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just some context. Thank you, Kirk. Great job. Just some context to that, too. We started talking about this during policy, and we, we kind of went, well, we're not sure where the board falls, you know? And we started developing two different policies, kind of a pro and a con. And I think even in the short amount of time we talked about it, we came to the realization that it, it's coming, and it's coming to education, whether we're pro or con. So instead, the focus is probably going to be more along the lines of if you're developing a policy that sets parameters, that talks about student privacy when you sign up for things, that talks about, you know, directing administration to provide professional development and, and those kinds of things. Would you, I mean, you've been there, Director Kreiser's been. Would you, I mean, you've been there, Director Kreiser's been there. I mean, would you, would you agree that that's probably the direction that, you know, we're thinking at this point?
Right, so PSBA has a draft policy for us to consider and to adopt. And that draft policy, as Dr. Messinger says, sort of takes two approaches. One is a a more promotive approach to generative AI, to use it in the school system to the advantage of the teachers and the students. The other one is a little bit more restrictive to to sort of put more parameters around that. So I would expect that in a committee meeting here soon, within a month or two, we'll have probably two drafts of that policy, that one more promotive and the one a little bit more restrictive. So our conversation is going to be, what do we think AI should look like here at Northern Lebanon? So I think that captures it. And and we we had wanted to have this presentation to sort of start that thought process in each of us so that when it comes time to it, we'll be able to have an informed conversation and discussion about what we think that policy looks like. And and I think what Kirk was saying is 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 true. That policy, all policies can be modified and changed and 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 so forth. But I think this AI policy is probably one we're probably going to have to look at every year, if not quarterly, as as information and technology advances. So that's, just be on the lookout for that pretty soon. Director Kreiser, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that, yeah, just for the time being, we have the policies that we have against, you know, for academic integrity is what we have to use until we get to a point where we're pleased with our AI policies.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? All right, great. Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll start with you, Ms. Martin.
So just two things really quick. The first is audit reports, and I'll email those out to everybody to read the final one. We already had the update from our auditors here in person. And the only thing I wanted to point out on the financial reports, if you reviewed them, was on the monthly board report for January, you could see the all other was high. And I just wanted to highlight that was we did some catch-up payments to our transportation company. So that was higher as well as there was three pays. So we had to pay three times to Piersers and three times to IRS in January just because of those three pays. So that was slightly higher that month. So if you caught that, that was why.
Okay, and we have a construction report tonight.
Sure. So I'm happy to report that musical practice is on the stage as of yesterday afternoon. We made the the mark in time that we needed to. There was some additional work that carried over to daytime today, but I believe they are now finished on the stage. If you happened to be dropping a student off this morning, you probably saw two tractor trailers sitting over there. The seating for the auditorium was delivered today and installation is underway. You'll notice, of course, it was, you know, part of the coldest time of year when we removed the outer wall of the twenties classrooms, but there is now CMU in place. The windows aren't there yet, and the curtain wall is currently going up. We've actually requested construction to turn those four classrooms over to us slightly earlier than scheduled. We'll have to see whether or not that comes to fruition. That actually helps us with teacher moves. We're trying to align it with days off in March so that we have a bit more time to to make the transition through the phases there. In that note, we turned over four additional classrooms that weren't slated until April timeframe, and those were in the forties and seventies halls. You know, as it goes, you've probably understand that we hit hurdles, and one of the hurdles that we've been experiencing in some of the oldest section of the building is though we've done a great job of asbestos abatement throughout the years where asbestos has been visible or accessible, we still have a fair amount that's hidden underneath of, well, for example, the cabinetry in the family consumer science classroom still has old flooring that likely has asbestos under it. And when that happens, we have our asbestos abatement company that we've worked with for many years come in and do the certified removal of the product. But that's just an example of a hurdle that comes before us. Another one that we're working through that we're not quite sure exactly where it's going to fall, but there's a a question about the quality of floor finish, not the floor itself, but the finish that goes on top, the wax coating. And we're working through the cleaning company, well, we're working to the general contractor who's working with the cleaning company to try to resolve the issues that we're seeing there. That's my update.
I will add that the auditorium is going to have 100 more seats in it than what it had before, which we are still trying to figure out, and supposedly I will still be comfortable in the seat. So that's the rumor, but yeah, I, the tearing out of the back, I don't know. I'm not sure what caused it or how they did it, but we have more seats, so that's good news, too. And I'm going to spare you much of a report tonight. You're going to listen to me talk next time. But I will just mention real briefly that, because I think it's worth mentioning. The girls' basketball team lost a heartbreaker in the semifinals of leagues in double overtime. But they have districts coming up, and they're the number two seed, and wrestling finished third in the district. And now they have their individual things starting, I believe, Saturday, Friday or Saturday this weekend. So some success there and a couple bowlers with with leagues as well. So ready for the postseason, see how we we do with that. So I'm going to leave it at that tonight, and it's the end of my report.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the public comment portion of this evening's meeting. Interested persons were asked to complete a written request to address the board prior to the public input session. Mrs. Hartman, I understand that there is no public comment this evening. Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an aye or yes. All votes opposed shall be stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state, I abstain when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as a unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. So we'll move to the consent agenda, which we discussed at last week's committee meeting. Dr. Messinger, any highlights?
No, just asked, we went over all of that last week. Did move one, the budget transfer over to discussion, but the rest of those items remain. Just ask that you would approve the consent items as presented.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. Thank you, Director Moyer. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also yes, so that motion carries unanimously. We'll move to the discussion agenda. Eight point one.
Eight point one, budget. We are looking for a percentage to work with to prepare the the budget for April, May.
Okay, if 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 the board would indulge me, here's what I propose that we do to start off. The administration has provided us the board with a proposal at 2.99%. That is the recommendation from the administration for the board to consider and to vote on. So what I am going to propose that we do is we start with a motion to to set the budget at a 2.99% increase. And then, once we have that motion, assuming we have a second, what I would invite the directors to do is during that discussion time, feel free to discuss all the issues that you see attendant to to that budget increase. So if you think it should be higher, you think it should be lower. For all of those reasons, during the discussion part of that, I would just encourage everybody to 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 engage in a robust discussion at that point. If the 2.99% carries by majority vote, then that will end the discussion and the voting on this item. And if not, then we will take nominations and seconds for alternative figures based upon what we understand the discussion to be at that point. Okay? Any questions on how I propose to proceed with this? Any concerns with that approach? Okay, then that stated, is there a motion to to prepare, to direct the administration to prepare a budget for the 2025-2026 school year with a 2.99% increase? Okay, thank you, Director England. Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Director Fowler. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So, yeah, this is always a difficult conversation necessary, one, part of our important job as board members to make this decision and to balance the needs of the district and the needs of our community and the desires of our community. And so I certainly appreciate the the fact that Leanne does such a nice job of presenting the information and giving us all the facts and information that we need to be able to make this informed decision. I think that as we continue each year to vote for increase, I feel like we continue to get a pushback from our community as to the question I get asked most frequently is, how is this sustainable? How can we continue to sustain this and sustain these increases? And so my hope would be to, while, you know, I I want to be realistic, we we cannot do a zero. I wish we could. We cannot. That's that, that's not sustainable either. And I certainly don't want to cripple the district in any way, and I want us to continue the momentum of moving forward with with the the projects that we've we've started and want those to be able to be completed and want to continue to enhance and enrich what we've already started. I I'm looking for something a little lower than a 2.9. And I I I want to be able to honor the request of our community and not continue to to take this to to 2.9. I would like to see something a little bit lower.
I'm in agreement with Director Murray. I mean, I think that, you know, we have a responsibility after passing increase, a large increase last year, that we need to try to do as much as we can and stretch the taxpayer dollar as far as we can. Especially given the governor's recent budget address, you know, maybe we will see more money. I know we always face that as an unknown, but it does seem likely that we could get more coming from state coffers this time as opposed to, you know, previous years. So I think that's something we should consider when we're deciding where we want to put the tax increase.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with Director Kreiser and Director Murray as well. I really do appreciate the 10-year numbers you give us. I think that's a great tool to use looking at what our district looks like, not only next year, but in the future. That being said, 2.99 looks great on the 10-year projection. I think a little bit lower could, going a little bit lower would also look great. I think the 10-year projection was given to us prior to the governor's remarks. Even if he doesn't get everything he wants, I still think we're going to get a significant increase. That's why I'd like to go a little bit lower as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just confirm that you're correct, that we did not have the governor's proposal at that point.
I wouldn't disagree with that approach. I guess my my initial thought was, and I think maybe you had proposed this last year, that looking forward, we would be able to consistently drop the the number. If we go a little lower, it's likely we'll need to probably bump it up in a couple of years, depending on how the the numbers come. But I'm not opposed to to doing anything.
Well, I'd be the first to admit that Stacy's right. We cannot afford a 0% just because of the construction bond payments. The taxpayers are going to have to pay seven, close to $7 million extras. That's not including expenses. And you don't want to, like Stacy said, you don't want to bankrupt the the districts and ask for higher taxes down the road. Lower, I think we can do lower and try to keep it as low as we can to help, to help the community out in going forth. I don't know if this is the time that I can present my rate or.
Your comment can be whatever you want it to be.
Oh, I thought you got, I thought you got.
No, no, if you've stayed a number that will help going down later, yeah.
I I think 2.5, 2.6 could be reasonable, and hopefully we can sustain that for the next couple of years. Now with that, I know I like to, I like to have 0% and have major cuts, but we can't do that either. So, you know, just think about, maybe the board should think about, you know, a 2.6 or 2.5 with a 1 million cut. You know, just, I'm just throwing out options for the for the board, that's all.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give us all the time we need. I'd like to hear from everybody that wants to speak.
So try not to repeat a lot of what was already said here this evening. I, you know, I agree, not wanting to go too high, given that we've, you know, done some very significant increases the last couple of years. But I would also hate for us as a district to lose momentum from personal experience to rely on the state for money, especially when he just, you know, I I admire Governor Shapiro's vision for public education. However, I don't know if everyone in Harrisburg has that same vision. And to place our hope in Harrisburg to provide the funds that we need as a district, you know, I I I really don't want to do that. And unfortunately, you know, we we don't know when changes will be made as far as how public schools are funded. And until that day comes, the primarily funding stream for public schools is through property tax. And that's just the, you know, the nature of the current beast. And preparing for and planning a budget is a lot like strategic planning. You know, you're you're trying to plan not just for the coming year, you're also planning for the future. And I know that's something that we've talked about numerous times, you know, at at least with my being on the board. We talked about that numerous times, and what does the future of the school district look like? And you know, if you look at, if you do a a two and a half percent, as as was already mentioned, we're we're going to have to do a greater increase in a in future years. So if you do 2.5% or 2.6% this year, next year, we're going to be in the same conversation, and we're going to have to probably bump it to three, you know, or or at least 2.9 or over three, just to get caught up again. You know, when you use those 10-year projections, and again, you know, those 10-year projections are based on numbers that we know. You know, and who knows, maybe those numbers will change in the next year or two, but we don't know that. We can only make decisions based on the information that we know. And the projections that have been provided to us is based on information that we know. And I would hate for us to say, oh, yeah, hey, we did a, we only did a 2.5% increase this year. And then next year at this time, we're looking at, well, now we're going to have to go over 3%. And so what kind of backlash will we get from the community then? You know, the the, what's been laid out for us, you know, gives us a very comfortable fund balance moving forward. There, you know, we're we're looking at, you know, a full-day kindergarten expansion. You know, if if we, you know, only do a a 2.5 or 2.6% increase now, are we going to be able to, you know, afford or fund a 4K program? You know, and be able to sustain that at the same time. You know, we talk about wanting to better our academic achievements here at the school district. And quite frankly, the, one of the best ways to do that is to invest in the school district. And if we don't invest in the school district with teachers and And if we don't invest in the school district with teachers, and, you know, I believe our full-day kindergarten pilot program is doing very well. I mean, we're seeing great results from a full-day program perspective. And so, you know, again, looking long-term, what kind of effect does that take, have on our students 10, 12 years from now? So we have these kindergartners, you know, having a full-day experience, gives them a better head start moving into first grade and so on and so forth. So, you know, all of that, you know, that trickle-down theory can really have a positive impact on our students moving forward. And so to do that, we have to invest in the school district. And, you know, while I still consider myself somewhat new to the district and new to the board, what I do know is that previous boards have failed to properly plan for the future, which is why we're in the position we're in today. And I give a lot of credit to Dr. Massinger and the current administration for getting the district back on track. I know the boards that I have been part of, we've done great work in planning for the future and moving the district forward in a positive way. And again, I really hate to lose that momentum. And so to do a 2.5, 2.6, the numbers don't add up. We're going to need to do a higher rate in the future to maintain a positive fund balance. To do 2.5 now, if you put that in the formula that we have, it brings us to a negative fund balance if we keep all the other numbers the same. And that's, again, looking at another 2.99 next year, and the year after, and the year after that, and then eventually moving it down. But that still brings us to a negative fund balance at the end of that 10 years. So, you know, we have a lot of catching up to do. Whereas if we maintain the plan that we have now, 2.9 now, and perhaps maybe next year, we might be able to lower it another half percent or a couple of percentage points. But I don't think now is the time to try to make a, sort of make a, any kind of positive statement to the, you know, to try to make a positive statement in the eyes of the community to say, hey, we only did this, a lower rate. While that might be nice to be able to say, it's not, I just don't see it as a practical application for the betterment of the district. And so I just think moving forward, sticking to what, at least for right now, to what has been given to us at 2.99 would be best for the school district moving forward.
Great, thank you. I think we've... Director Fowler, do you have any comments?
Man. That's the right of the president to reserve. So I'm going to agree with everything Director Williams said, and I think my least favorite part about the budget conversation we have every single year is we use broad numbers like 2.99 and 2.6 when the actual impact to the household, if I got those numbers correct, is going to be less than $20 a year. My first year, when I was here, we argued over a percentage that changed households' taxes by $5 a year. So I think that was five years ago. So $5 times five years is $25. We'd actually be in better shape, and we could be at 2.6 and be in better shape if we hadn't argued over $5 five years ago. It's kind of how I run my household budget, too. I'd rather sacrifice right now so that in the future, I have a better shot to be lower. And so I would always advocate for what the administration wants. I think 2.99 is reasonable, and I really hate arguing over $18 a year.
Yep. Great, thank you. And I think Director Fowler just put his name in the hat for president next year so that he can talk last. Okay. Did we hear from everyone? I think I've heard from everyone. I, yeah, I don't want to belabor the point too much. I tend to agree with the comments of Director Fowler and Director Williams. I would say that as hard as it has been over the last four years, and I know you were looking right at me with that comment about arguing over $5, so I'll take the blame for that six years ago. I think as hard as it has been, and I'm a taxpayer, as hard as it has been over the last few years, I think we are in a successful position, and I think that strategy has been successful. Last year, when we talked about the budget increase, and we talked about, you know, a 6.5 for a second consecutive year, in my mind, what I was looking at was the ability for the district to then gradually reduce the tax increases going forward. I completely agree with the comments that have been said. As much as I would love a 0% increase, it's just not realistic. As long as the cost of goods and services continues to go up, that's just the reality. And until there's deflation in this country, which has never happened, I don't ever see us in a position where that's a realistic option. What I do think is realistic is a gradual glide path, and I think that's what I was looking forward to last year when we talked about this, and my target was 3% or lower. And I know we're talking about a 2.99%. It's a 3%, you know, for all intents and purposes. And last year, that's about where I thought we could be, and I thought that would have been indicative of the success of the strategy that we've employed over the last few years. It's still 3%, and I recognize that that is, that's asking the taxpayer to contribute to Director Fowler's point. It's not, you know, it's not asking a terrible amount, but it is certainly an ask. The benefits that I think to Director Williams's comments, I think, are significant. I think that they weigh in favor of that gradual glide path. I am concerned that if we don't do, as Director Williams said, I am concerned that if we don't take a more gradual approach, that in the near future, we're going to have to crank it up again. All of that said, I am also receptive to the information and arguments about the governor's plan and the increased funding, and I really, really, really hope that that is the case. I also, it resonates with me that we run a conservative budget, we run a conservative district, and that is also the right approach. And I would much rather us run a conservative budget than otherwise. What we have seen, and this is the flip side of the 3%, what we have seen is that our revenues have outpaced expenses, and that's a positive thing. That is also how you want to run a household budget. And those two things, relying on them, the conservative budget plus the hope for increased state funding are significant. And I would support a lower increase with those concerns that I've already stated, being stated. I think I've said this before, but I remember when I was in Officer Candidate School, my tac officer drilled into our heads that hope is never a course of action, that is not a course of action that we can take as much as I would really like to. So for that reason, I'm not inclined to go much lower, although I see all of the benefits and reasons in support of that approach. I think, and I'm saying that in quotation marks, I think we can go lower, but I'm just not, I'm just not at this point comfortable relying on that thought process. And I would suspect that even at 2.99%, we will still have, it will be the lowest millage increase, I believe, for the county. I'm betting. And I think we would still have the lowest millage rate for Lebanon County. And that's also a significant, significant point to consider. So at this point, when it comes to a vote on a 2.99, I do think it's the most prudent course of action. It may not be the most comfortable, but I do think it is the most prudent, and I do think that that will set us up in future years to continue that gradual glide path down without having to perhaps make an upward correction. And I recognize that maybe the upward correction would not be necessary, given some of those unknowns that we have. But at this point, to Director Williams' point, I think that's the only thing that I can see, is that we would have to make a potential upward movement again down the road. So, okay. With that, did you have anything to add, Dr. Massinger?
No, just that I believe you're correct at this point in time, and there's a long way to go, but I do believe that the other local school districts will be above that. And I do believe that the gap with most of them will increase, and the one that was just very slightly below us will go above us. And just wanted to confirm, those are initial reports, and again, there's a long way to go. But we're doing this a little bit earlier this year so that we can work through some of this.
Great. Okay, we do have a motion. We have a second. We have had robust discussion, I think, everybody. That was probably the best discussion I think we've had on this issue in a number of years. So we will move immediately to a vote. We will do this based on a roll call vote. So Mrs. Martin, if, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hartman, if I could have a roll call vote on the motion to adopt or to direct the administration to prepare a budget for the 2025, 2026 school year at a 2.99% increase.
Director Kreiser?
No.
Director Moyer?
No.
Director Fowler?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Murray?
No.
Director Klein?
No.
Director England?
Yes.
Director Naum?
Yes. Okay, that motion does not carry. If I'm counting, it's four votes to four, so that motion does not carry. So we will now move to discussion and motions for alternative numbers. And I think what I'll do here, rather than we'll just take one number and vote on it, I'd like to receive motions for whatever numbers folks are thinking of so that we can have an expectation of how that vote will go going forward. So the floor is open to motions for budget increases of different percentage numbers.
I'll make a motion for 2.75%.
2.75%? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second from Director Klein. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Hartman, may please have a roll call vote on 2.75%.
Director Moyer?
No.
Director Fowler?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Director England?
Yes.
Director Naum?
Yes.
Director Kreiser?
No.
Okay, that carried. Six to seven, no, six to two, sorry.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, that motion carries. The board has adopted a motion to direct the administration to prepare a budget for the upcoming school year at a 2.75% increase. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the robust discussion. Okay, we will move to 8.2. Dr. Massinger.
As you know, that we have from day one knew that from a borrowing capacity standpoint, the last bond would not cover the, all the additional or the remainder of the construction project, including the soft costs, including the things that Dr. Reese talked about, asbestos removal on sidewalks and those kinds of things. We've talked through that pretty well, but the motion was to approve a transfer of $9.3 million to the general fund balance from the capital projects fund.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt item 8.2?
Motion to approve 8.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Director Kreiser. Any discussion?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry to bring this up to a discussion, but I was wondering, I understand Leanne's point as far as moving the 9.3 to the capital project to help offset the extra bond payments. But I do realize that if you take that 9.3 out of the general checking fund and towards the capital projects, we're still going to have to end up possibly, and possibly do another bond. And I was thinking, if we do another bond with 7 million as the next of what we can allow, if only transferring 5 million over, that would, that would pretty much leave, I'm trying to figure out my notes here, that will leave approximately $4.3 million to fund the capital projects with the high school. That's with the 5 million going over. So then, like I said, if, and then you save up 4 million in the general, and that way we don't have to complete the capital improvement down to pretty much nothing, and that way we can try and use some of the extra to complete some projects. And I know there was, and I asked Leanne about what's in the escrow that Township Store has, and that's a 3.1 million. That's a lot of money in escrow that could be used towards capital projects in addition to the 3.3 left that we have left in from the bonds from the high school. I do think we're going to need another bond payment, I really do think, to help offset some additional asks for the capital projects for like the track, the soccer field, the sidewalks. I'm trying to think what else, you know, could come up, extra things. So I'm just, I thought maybe a 5 million transfer at this point instead of 9.3.
I will respond to that. We didn't have time to go back and forth in email. I don't think Ben's that far off with a bad idea. I, too, can definitely see the advantage of leaving some money in our general fund. Going out for another bond is a possibility, and Brad Remming and I have discussed that. Another option that he suggested to us, getting bonds is expensive. Gary and I have to sit on this call with S&amp;P for about a half an hour to an hour, not that we mind the time, but Gary and I aren't that amazing, and they charge us anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 for that review to get the bonds. Yes, yes. It's a very expensive time for S&amp;P to give us a review to get a bond. So one of the things that Brad Remming floated out to us, if we wanted to leave some more money over in our general fund, which we can do, is that next year, when we get down to that point, we still have money tied up in escrow, and we're a little short on cash, is we can get a loan for, you know, 1 to 3 million just to float in there a little bit. So we could do that, rather than going out and getting another whole bond and paying for all of that and putting it over 20 years. We can kind of be a little more flexible with a payback schedule on that as well. So that is an option to not transfer over the 9.3 million. I would ask that you would, we're out of money in our construction fund right now because it's tied up. 6 million would kind of get me through because I have to pay January, February, March, and possibly some of Aprils until that money's actually there and available for me. So it's just kind of the timing of everything. There's so many variables. We're not quite sure how much we're going to get on this bond, as Brad Remming said last time. We could get some premium and get a little bit extra. We're doing really well in interest. I think I told you guys, we're over $700,000 in interest on the bond money that we've gotten, you know? So as long as interest rates stay attractive, I will continue to earn money on this next $9 million that we get in. There's so many variables, so I think Ben brings up a very valid point and a different look at it. So it's, either way would work fine for me. We will figure it out. I will, again, have to come back to you guys to either do another transfer, get a loan. You know, when we get closer, maybe we have some of those unknowns become knowns. We can decide then as a board what we'd like to do. So I, I'm fine either way.
And I just want to point out a couple, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Leanne, to clarify mostly all there.
Just to point out a couple of things. We waited a little bit. The one that we're talking about, really two different, either a bond and a loan or two bonds. One of the reasons this came up was, I actually said something, I think it was Dr. Reese the next morning, wow, I didn't realize our borrowing capacity, because projections did not increase it that fast. And I think you asked the question actually last week about the borrowing capacity. It jumps to 7 million after this year. So, but we're talking about the one that's currently in the works, and then either an additional, either bond or loan. In this case, you're talking about potentially just a loan. It wouldn't necessarily need to go through all of the different things. It would be a little bit cheaper to get. We actually did toss that out, so it's interesting that you tossed out, you know, that idea, too, because there's a lot of different ways to look at it from that standpoint. And just, you know, in terms of being out of money in the construction project, you know, one of the reasons for that is we had received word that bond rates were coming down. So we were waiting as long as possible. We knew we already had to take the money. So we knew we had the money. I just, I don't want it to sound like we knew this was going to happen, like it was a planned thing.
Yeah, we knew it was going to get tight. We knew this was going to be a pinch point. Brad Remming and I were talking, we were, you know, we had to wait for the new calendar year because that's one of the reasons we can't earn interest money on this, and also then we were waiting until...
But we could have done this in Jan...
Politically, things calmed down and the rates got a little more attractive.
We could have done it in January, but the word on the street was that bond rates would, might continue to come down, and it would be helpful in the long run, so.
Just real briefly, I'm going to suspend formal... Just real briefly, I'm going to suspend formal discussion just for a second because I think Director Moyer has raised a good, a good point, but I think we may need some clarification. So if I understand, Leanne, you're saying, so Director Moyer has said...
I said five, but I think if Leanne feels comfortable with six, I'm okay with six.
You would, okay. So then, the idea, the thinking here, just so I make sure that I'm tracking all of this. So rather than moving that additional 3.3 million over, we would essentially amortize it and borrow it over potentially another 25-year period starting next year? Is that the way that would work if we were to do the bond, second bond?
Correct. It wouldn't, we could get a loan then next year in 20, in the calendar year 2026 or whatever we need to finish out, the construction projects. Sorry. We could also, I have requested for the township. 1.5 million is related to the elementary school and escrow. I believe we could probably get that lowered down to less than a million. So I have requested that they review that and that we get some of that money back. So there is just a lot of variables about the timing and when we will need the money and, you know, it's okay to keep it in our general fund and it's there. We can always come back, you know, and maybe if things turn out a certain way, I'll have to come back in the summer or the fall and ask to do another transfer. As long as we're all on the same page and we know what our goals are and that there's so many variables, the 6 million will get me through far enough until the bond money comes in in April. And like I said, we might have answers to a lot of these questions that are out there right now. And will we get the money back from our escrow quickly and have some of that to work with? Potentially.
Okay. And have you had a chance to take a look at what the long-term cost would be of amortizing an additional 3.3 million?
I have not. And I can ask Brad for that and get it out to you guys, you know, before we would ever make another transfer again or whether we decide to go out for a loan or not.
Okay. Okay, before we restart formal discussion, any other questions, clarifications for Director Moyer or for Leanne regarding, I just want to say it's a very creative approach. Appreciate it. Any other clarifying questions?
I have one, just the additional, it's possible that we may not even need to borrow that additional 3.3, like you were saying, because it could be come out of escrow and things like that.
If we would get all of our escrow money back, however, one of the big expense items is the sidewalk and I believe that's why they're holding a lot of our money in escrow. So it would be all a matter of timing, but it could work out perfectly that we wouldn't need to do that. It's highly unlikely just because of, I'm getting an idea of how these escrow things work and they don't move quickly.
Okay. Hold on, I'm listening to a solicitor. Okay, right now, what we have is a motion to approve 8.2 as listed, and that would be a transfer of 9.3 million. I do want to hear more discussion on that because right now, a vote no would mean that we would, we would not approve 8.2, which is fine. We could, yes, she does. We could, we could do a secondary motion or we can, we can table the current motion and we can receive a motion to amend if folks are interested in doing that. But I'd like to hear more discussion on the current motion, just to find out what the best course of action is. So is there any other discussion on the current motion to approve 8.2 and the 9.3 transfer? Okay, is there an interest to amend the motion to change the number?
I make the motion to amend it.
Okay. There's a motion to amend the current motion and that motion to amend, do you want to try to state or do you want me to?
Yeah, you want me to?
Okay, so the motion to amend would be to approve the transfer of 6 million from the designated assigned general fund balance to the capital projects fund. That motion to amend is now on the table. Is there a second to amend the motion? Okay, yeah, thank you, Director Murray. So there is a second. Is there any discussion on amending the motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion to amend, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Motion carries. My vote is also yes. So we now have a revised motion on 8.2, which is a transfer of 6 million. We have, Brooke, do I need to take a, do I need to take another motion and a second on that or are we good to continue with the vote?
Yeah, so procedurally, you've amended what's on the table. Now you need to vote on that amendment. So you amended what's listed there. Now we need a roll call vote to transfer the 6 million.
Okay, great, thank you. And you did not scare me by popping up on the screen.
I knew it would appear suddenly, so I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hartman, may I please have a roll call vote on motion to approve 8.2 as amended?
Director Fowler?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Murray? Director Klein?
Yes.
Director England?
Yes.
Director Nam?
Yes.
Director Kreiser?
Yes.
Director Moyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Great, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Moyer. That was creative approach. Really appreciate that. That was beneficial. Okay, 8.3, this is the new item on the agenda?
Yeah, this is, unfortunately, we're in a situation where Stock and Leader needed to make a referral to interim bond counsel for this particular bond. So this was the item that was added. We're authorizing administration to work with Saxon and Stump by Aranda Lord as interim bond counsel to proceed with and prepare for the issuance of the general obligation bond.
Okay, any questions? We did discuss this in exec. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve 8.3?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Director Moyer. Is there a second? Thank you, Director Murray. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving 8.3, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My motion is, my vote is also yes, so the motion carries unanimously. Okay, 8.4, policy.
Yeah, those four policies were listed last week. We talked specifically about one of them. Several of them, we actually revised a while ago, but been going through Stock and Leader for review. Those are the last of our old, old, old policies. And 011 was modified at some point, in a not-too-distant past, but it did not include PSBA's new principles for governance and leadership, and it does now.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to also go to 8.5. I think we actually need to vote on 8.5 before we can vote on 8.4, considering that policy 011 does indicate that the board has adopted the resolution.
Good point. 8.5 would be the resolution itself, taken directly from PSBA. It just, it has those revised principles for governance and leadership. We talked about this at committee meeting. It's attached there for you to look at, but pretty straightforward, and I think we all agree on those principles.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item 8.5? Thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion then. All those in favor of approving 8.5 and the resolution, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also yes, so that motion carries unanimously, which means we can now move to item 8.4. Is there a motion to adopt item 8.4? Okay, thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Director Klein. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving 8.4, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote's also a yes. Motion carries unanimously. We'll go to the calendar.
Yeah, it's that time again to look at next year. I think I've talked about this in the past, but last year we went to hours. I believe we were one of the very few, if not the only one, in IU 13. This year, there's been tons of discussion or others are following suit. So I'm proud to say that I could answer a lot of questions about it. I think the beauty of using hours is it is flexible then based on how holidays align, how your data aligns in terms of collection and being able to review that. I think it offers more flexibility with teacher in services. You know, there's just a lot of benefits that occur through the use of the hours rather than the days. I'm a firm believer that, I don't know where the 180 days came from, but I don't think it's a magic number. So we once again use calendar, used hours. There's 175 student days. I think the two highlights, Christmas break's a tad bit shorter because it's on a Thursday, so we will come to school Monday and a half day on Tuesday. I think the other two, the other two revisions are a dated, half of a dated day for us to, it's a half a day for kids and the other half is a data, will be data analysis for us. You saw the presentation last week. It's in September, so it will be that baseline data to make decisions for teachers in terms of grouping their kids, who needs reading support and those kinds of things. That's in September. And then there's another one in February that is piggybacks, that first Monday in March that we usually have our musical production. And that is hopefully, hopefully, the day where we will be moving from a construction standpoint into our final set of rooms. That's when it's scheduled for. So a little bit extra time there to be able to accomplish this move, but the rest of it is pretty much the way. Oh, there was one other change. Every school district in the county is no longer doing the Monday after Thanksgiving now that deer season starts earlier, a few days earlier. And so we already had kids going to CTC that day. Hey, if you want to go hunting, turn in your excuse and go hunting. God bless you. I like deer jerky, bring me some. But we will have school that day, so, and since it's Thanksgiving's on a Thursday, it's not, you know, too close to the holiday, but I'm sorry. It is a tradition back to when I was here, you know, as a student, so.
That reminds me of, you know, somebody in Europe would say that all of our traditions are not really traditions. Because they're only 200 years old. Okay, any questions for Dr. Messinger?
The only other thing I'd note is that there is a note on the bottom that subject to change due to construction, just, or renovations, just so it's out there. You know, we don't anticipate anything, but should something come up, we reserve the right to make a change.
Great. Okay, motion to approve item 8.6. Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Kreiser, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving 8.6, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote's also a yes. Motion carries unanimously, and we'll go to 8.7.
And finally, this was actually on the January agenda, listed in the information, the induction plan. Mrs. Bruce and Dr. Reese have done a tremendous job of putting together, I mean, we've always had induction, but it has, it has gone through multiple, multiple changes and what I would consider to be improvements. Anyway, it's time for us to get that to the state and get it approved, but that's been attached for your review and we were going to approve it tonight.
Okay, any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve item 8.6? 8.7, sorry, 8.7. Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Williams. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving 8.7, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. My vote's also a yes. Okay, thank you. That's it for our discussion items. We'll move to the reports. We have a CTC minutes. Director Klein or Director Moyer, I saw that you were attending the last meeting. Anything to report?
Not much of anything to report besides, I think they're looking for a carpenter.
Yeah, actually, if you, if you can carpenter, they're looking for one.
And I must say, those kids, they do wonderful job as far as making, making cookies and desserts. I got, I had to give them to them. They were, the cookies were delicious.
Great. Okay, any questions? Okay, good report. Legislatively, it's on Director Kreiser.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of specifics from the governor's budget address. So he has proposed an additional 75 million in basic education funding, and then also an additional 526 million that would address the inadequacies that were identified by the Commonwealth in the funding formula for school districts. He also has a significant increase for special education funding and was hoping to secure additional money for mental health and safety and security in schools. And then probably something that we would be very interested in would be a cap on cyber school tuition reimbursements that would set that at $8,000 per student.
$8,000? Okay, great. Great, thank you. Any questions? Great report, thank you. PSBA liaison, Director Palau, is not here. So we will go to IU 13. Director Murray?
I have a personal story to share about the IU 13. So this, last week, I got a personal, or a work email praising an IU 13 worker. And I just, it made me proud to represent the IU and made me proud to be on the board, but just want to highlight the tremendous work that the IU staff do and work with the most difficult children, our most difficult children. So just don't want to ever forget the work that they're doing over there and continue to notice. So that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Good report. Any questions for IU 13? Okay, Director Fowler, change order committee?
None.
Okay. I would note that we do have an attachment for your review. Take a look at all the change orders that have been made in the absence of a report. Excellent non-report, as always, thank you.
I want it as short as possible, no report, three words.
Well, none. Good, thank you. Okay, information, item 10, Dr. Messinger.
Yeah, just a reminder, if you were going to the legislative breakfast, if you were interested in going, which is March 3rd, 2nd, 3rd, it's the Monday, whatever the Monday is. Tomorrow's the last day to sign up for that. How many do we have so far? Two. So if anybody else wants to go, it is a good breakfast, but it's in Lancaster, so I understand you may not be able to go, but if you're interested, please let Ann know by tomorrow.
Great. It is a good, it is a good breakfast and it's really nice to have a little bit of face time with the legislators and their staff. Okay, dates to remember, all listed down there. I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. I guess we wanted to stick around. Any discussion? Only item for discussion that I have is remember, we do need to finish up our brief executive session immediately afterwards. So with that, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.